Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, October 29th, 2019 Board of Selectmen's meeting. I'll read the agenda. Seven o'clock, we have Citizens Input. Seven oh five, we have a public hearing. Forbes Crossing Hospitality LLC DBA. Hampton Inn and Suites, Foxborough Mansfield Transfer and Change of Location of an Off Premises Annual Wine and Beer Malt Beverage Package Store License. Seven twenty, we have another public hearing. MGPK Inc. for a change of a DBA, name and approval of a seven-day entertainment and common victualers license. Seven thirty-five, we have three Cultural Council appointments. Seven forty-five, we have GMRI Inc. doing business as the Olive Garden Italian Restaurant, change of manager. Eight o'clock, we have a presentation from Prop Inc. about a film shoot here in Foxborough. Eight fifteen, Selectmen's update. Eight twenty, Town Manager's update. Eight twenty-five, Assistant Town Manager's update and a few action items. So, Bill, why don't you lead us from the place there?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Anybody here for Citizens Input? Just in time.
But I don't have any.
But nothing. That's great.
Thank you, though.
So we'll go right into the Forbes Crossing Hospitality. You guys ready?
Good.
Good. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. Attorney Frank Spleen, representing Forbes Crossing Hospitality LLC. With me tonight is Mark Landry, who is one of the co-owners of Applicant, and Bonnie Break, who is the appointed manager for the license. This evening, we're here in front of the board on the application of Forbes Crossing Hospitality LLC.
Hold on just a second. Do we have to read a public notice?
You have to open a public hearing.
We have to open up a public hearing. I'm sorry, Frank.
Go right ahead.
All right. The Board of Selectmen acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 138, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, October 29th, 2019, beginning at 7:05 PM in the Gala Meeting Room, Town Hall, 40 South Street, Foxborough, Mass., on the application of a transfer of license and change of location of an off-premises annual wine and malt beverage package store license from Antonius International Foods Inc., doing business as Antonius Deli, 369 Central Street, Foxborough, Mass. Manager Giacomo Tociella to Forbes Crossing Hospitality LLC, doing business as Hampton Inn and Suites, Foxborough/Mansfield, to Foxborough Boulevard, Foxborough, Mass., Manager Bonnie Lynn Break. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you again. Attorney Frank Spleen for the Applicant Forbes Crossing Hospitality LLC, doing business as Hampton Inn and Suites, located over at Forbes Crossing, formerly Foxville Plaza, requesting a transfer of a annual package store wine and malt beverage only local license, a beer and wine off-premises license, from Antonius International Food Inc., which does business as Antonius Deli, also located in Forbes Crossing. The premises of the Hampton Inn and Suites is located at 2 Foxborough Boulevard, again within the Hampton Inn, and the store will be located on the first floor in the reception area, which is approximately 950 square feet, the store area. The store will again sell beer and wine, available to the public for purchase and consumption off-premises from the store. Again, the manager will be Bonnie Blake, who is tip-certified, as well as all employees who will be working in the reception store area will all be tip-certified. Again, both of the transferee and transfer are located in Forbes Crossing, excuse me, so the license won't be moving very far at all. Antonius Deli has been using it within their location, but it's been for sale for quite a while, and Hampton Inn has it under a purchase and sale agreement. The board has the application, the floor plan, and all the other required filings. I've gone over with the administration, but at this time, I'd just like to ask Bonnie Break to just go over her employment history and her tip certification. Bonnie?
Hi, how are you? I'm Bonnie, I'm the general manager at the Hampton Inn and Suites. I have been tip-certified for many years, starting early in the 1990s. I was a waitress and a bartender for many chain restaurants, and then I went on to work for private, smaller restaurants in Newport, Rhode Island. So I maintained my tip-certification through my first front-office manager position in Longworth Resort in Newport, because we also ran a steakhouse there, the Longworth Steakhouse, so sometimes I would go over and help in that regard, so I maintained active tip-certification. When I went and opened the Hampton Inn in Newport, I did not maintain it, because we did not have a liquor license, but then I renewed it again when we opened the Homewood Suites. We offered beer and wine as a complimentary item for our social during the evening, and then I got re-tip-certified as we were going through this process, so it's something I've done on and off throughout my career since the early 90s.
Great. And you've been there since the beginning, right?
Yep, since opening, yes.
Since opening.
Yeah. So I think the application has all the required filings, the floor plan, lease agreement and all that, so if the board has any questions for us or for Mark, who is, again, one of the owners with regard to the Hampton Inns, Forbes Crossing, as well as the whole Forbes Crossing development.
Any questions from the board?
So I take it the idea is that you would have the beverages available and people that have registered at the hotel if they wish to purchase bottles of beer, wine, et cetera. They'd be able to purchase it rather than having to try and locate a liquor establishment?
Correct. Correct. Yes.
That's fine.
It just says a much shoot of that, but people from off the street could go in.
Yes.
It's open to the public.
It's open to the public.
Okay.
Dave?
Nope. Spending most of my summer traveling in these softball tournaments comes in very handy.
It does.
No, it's not uncommon to see this in Hampton Inn or Courtyard or Holiday Inn, so...
This is a public hearing. Anybody from the public want to say a few words? All right. No one? I'll take a motion to close public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right. Okay. Make a motion for the transfer of the license to Forbes Crossing Hospitality LLC from the current holder of said license.
Second.
All those in favor? All right. Awesome. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Chairman, I think you want to approve Bonnie as the manager as well.
We do.
Just a motion to approve her as a manager, correct?
What's that?
Just to approve Bonnie as the manager for the license, as a license.
For both.
Yeah, for both.
Approval of the transfer?
Yes.
And for Bonnie.
Make a motion for the new manager of the facility, Bonnie Lynn Break, as the manager of the liquor establishment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good luck. When did you open? Meant to ask that.
With the license?
Yeah.
As soon as we're approved. We're hoping to be on the Dallas game.
Right, through the ABCs. Yeah, that's right.
We've got a big football game coming up next month. It'd be nice to have it for that.
Thank you.
Good luck.
You're welcome. Okay. Public hearing, MGPK. I see everybody's here. You guys ready to come on up? And in the meantime, you want to read the public notice? When you get a chance.
No.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm Jeff Lovely. I'm representing Sam Labib. We're just going to read the public hearing notice.
They didn't put one here under the paperwork.
Legal ad next to House of Pizza Internet Internal Comments.
Public hearing notice. The Board of Selectmen acting as local licensing authority pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 138, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, October 29th, 2019, beginning at 7:20 PM in the Gala Meeting Room, Town Hall, 40 South Street, Foxborough, Mass., on the application of MGPK Inc. to change the DBA name on an annual all-alcoholic beverages license authorized by special legislation, Chapter 308 of the Acts of 2016, from Sam's Place to Foxborough House of Pizza, and for the approval of a seven-day entertainment and common victualers license for the premises located at 34 Central Street. Manager Sam Boucher Labib. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
All right. Thank you. See, the staff isn't here, so I'll give this to Bill. This is the affidavit of notice of tonight's hearing. I got all the green cards back. Thank you. I'm Jeff Lovely. We were here, I think, over the summer requesting that your board issue a liquor license to Mr. Labib's new restaurant at 34 Central Street, and that you were kind enough to grant that license. Since then, Sam has continued with his permitting and construction of the site. Has, the site is largely completed now. He hopes to open on December 1st for business. There's quite a bit of work still to be done, but he can, he can get there. So we're here for actually three things. First is, when I initially applied for the license, we used Sam's Place as the working name of the restaurant. After that time, Sam determined that it was very important for him to continue the name and goodwill of the Foxborough House of Pizza, which has been in business in Foxborough for at least 30 or 40 years. So he actually, he, Sam operates the business at the corner of Bird Street and Railroad Ave. Initially, he was thinking that he would keep Foxborough House open and run the restaurant, but that did not work out, so he ultimately purchased from the actual owner of the name, Foxborough House of Pizza, the telephone number, the website, the goodwill, et cetera. So when I, when I advised Bill of that, he had some concerns about changing the name from sort of a comfortable name like Sam's Place to Foxborough House of Pizza, which kind of has a different feel to it. To that, I'd say actually a couple of things. First, Sam, Sam worked with, with Bill on, on the sign, and really, I'll hand these around. The concept, and these are signs, we need to get a sign permit for this, but these signs will go, the main sign will go in front of the building in the same location.
Thank you.
And the same size as the existing old Shushak sign. And I think what, what we're trying to do here is to let the public know that it is the Foxborough House of Pizza, but also that it's a bar and they serve a broad range of food. So we took, we took Bill's concern with that issue seriously and did our best to kind of cover the board there, so that, so that's the first request that we're making, which is to change the name so that it's a DBA, Foxborough House of Pizza. The other two requests, we didn't file them when we came in for the liquor license, but one is for an entertainment license, and the entertainment is simply TVs, so people can watch football games and sporting events while they're there. There's no other entertainment. There may be some music at times.
Yes, like to speak, apologies.
Not live music or anything like that. And the other is for the vitlers license, so that they can serve food. I do have actually some, some slight revisions to the floor plan. The overall seating is now about 58. I think we were using 60 at the time, but I believe we have 14 seats at the bar, and about 4 seats at tables. I've been over there a couple of times this week. He's doing a nice job on the dildo, fairly high-end, expensive finishes, so I think when you walk in there, it's going to be a nice appearance, it's going to be a comfortable place to eat, and it's not going to seem like a house of pizza. It's going to be more like a family restaurant. So he's hoping to open on December 1st. We've been working with various boards on the necessary permits. Will be completing his application to the Board of Health, hopefully tomorrow. The Board of Health needed this dimensioned layout with all of the equipment, et cetera, and some other information. He's making progress on all of his construction, electrical, plumbing, and things like that, so we hope to get it all together by the 1st.
Great. Any questions from the board?
No. I mean, it's just more or less a name change. The man's not changing.
That's right.
The man, the legend. We gave, we gave the all-alcohol license to Sam, so whatever he wants to call his place, I think it's kind of secondary, so I have no...
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say a few words, because I did work with Sam directly on this, and, you know, when, when Jeff came in and said, you know, we're just going to change the House of Pizza, well, that suggests that that's just primarily a takeout type of restaurant, and so I said, instead, I know it was important for him to maintain the House, Foxborough House of Pizza, because it's a recognized name throughout this community, so I said, but if you simply add the words Bar and Trattoria, it infers that there is more than just this takeout restaurant type of place, and so that was the thinking behind doing that. So I appreciate the fact that he did that, and, and I did try to stop by today. You were, the doors were locked, they couldn't get in, but I tried to, I saw that with you, we're doing workouts. I was actually at the cable studio today, so I tried to swing by, but the doors were all locked.
Ninety-five percent almost done now, like only 5% left.
It's getting there, yeah. Coming along nicely, though. Doing a nice job. You're welcome.
This is a public hearing. Anybody from the public? Okay.
Motion to approve the change of DBA.
Close the public first.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ed, what we'll do is we'll do the name change first, and then, second, we'll do the entertainment and victualers license together.
Very good. Motion to approve the change of DBA name from Sam's Place to Foxborough House of Pizza in connection with the licensed premises that be located at 34 Central Street.
Second, and under discussion, just amend that to Foxborough House of Pizza Bar and Trattoria.
I don't think Bar and Trattoria will be on the license, though, will it?
I don't think it necessarily has to be on a license, just a signage.
Right, the signage.
Just a signage?
Yeah.
I think those are more general descriptive terms.
Right.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Make a motion in connection with the alcoholic beverages license and the approval of a seven-day entertainment and common victualer license at the premises to be located at 34 Central Street.
Second.
All those in favor? Here you go.
Thank you.
You're good?
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much.
Good night.
Thanks, guys. Thank you. All righty. I think Cultural Council is here with their three new appointments. Yeah? Good you brought them all in. Oh, it's not the kids.
I noticed they're getting a little younger. Their appointments are getting a little younger at this, in their age, so I noticed that.
Yeah, sorry.
I was going to say...
That's okay. It's okay.
Three kids, three appointments, I got confused.
Yeah, I know. I'm sorry. My wife is stuck at work, so...
Apologies.
But they've promised me they'll be on their best behavior.
So far, so good.
Yeah. So, hi, again, I'm Jared Craig with the Foxborough Cultural Council, and over the course of the year, we've lost a few members whose terms were up or who have other commitments who have had to leave the Cultural Council for various reasons, so we have three candidates who I'm very excited about. They were all brought to us by Julie Philibert, who's been on the council for, I think, four years now. She's also very enthusiastic and energetic about the work that we're doing, and I think that these three candidates, we have Nancy Kazer, Lydia Haig, and Nicole Vashon Hanlon. They're all very enthusiastic about Foxborough in general. They've lived here longer than I have, all of them, and I think that just the energy that they would bring to the council would be great. I'd let them introduce themselves and give a little bit of background, either individually or, or one by one, however you want to do it is up to you, so I'll introduce Nicole first.
Okay. I moved here four years ago. I live over on the east side of Foxborough and have received three grants now from the Foxborough Cultural Council, worked with veterans with Mike Johns, worked with some story walks putting in through the area. I have worked with a lot of different things already with the Cultural Council, but my background is environmental and cultural sustainability. I have a master's in that, and I'm an artist who also does expressive therapy with different people, but works with kids to adults a large span. Pretty much I've been adjusting to lots of different things as I've been here. Like I said, I moved from Virginia four years ago, and there, prior to that, I was on environmental and art boards and groups, active, very active in my many years on the planet so far. And my kids are in the school system, so I see that spectrum of need and, and interest as well, so I'm very excited to be a part of this and continue, I hope, to make a difference, a positive difference in Foxborough.
Hi, I'm Lydia Haig. I've lived here for over 20 years, raised my kids here, and raised them probably the same way my parents raised me, with as much cultural exposure as I could possibly give them. They are now off to college as of this fall, so it's a nice time for me to be able to begin some volunteer and work, service work in town, so it feels kind of like full circle for me. There were things that drew us to the town of Foxborough 20-some years ago that, and a lot of it had to do with cultural, what was going on with the Orpheum, what goes on in the high school, the music program. I don't have a strong arts background, other than way, way back, but we won't use dates, but I'm in the sciences, and I hope that maybe my background in grant review may help with some of the fund, funding and reviews that the committee does annually.
Thank you.
And my name's Nancy Kazer, and my family and I have lived here for nine years, but we go back much further with our ties to the town, with my husband being a teacher at the high school. I'm a former Foxborough teacher as well, so our ties here are pretty strong. When we moved here, one thing that was, ended up being an unexpected surprise with our children was how interested they became in the arts, in music, and, as well as art, you know, art itself, and it's just been really neat to see. My kids now range from eighth grade to out of high school, how much that's impacted their lives in a positive way. It's helped them with confidence, with developing who they are, with expressing themselves, expressing their feelings, and so it's just been such a positive impact in our personal family. They've also been involved in drama, and so it's really, it's really been a wonderful thing in our family to see, and I think that was what drew me to want to become a part of this council, is it's been so positive in my family. I'd love to see myself be able to help others find that positive impact in the arts.
Awesome. Great.
And I just, I want to say, too, that we're trying to, you know, expand our reach and our goals, and I think that the three of them each have unique talents that will help us do that throughout the course of the next few years, so really love to see them all approved and appointed.
Any questions from the board?
So, just a quick comment. Any recommendation from Julie or yourself that comes before the board, we're fully going to support. Since you've become on the board, the Cultural Council is, has taken off and really has done some amazing things, so thank you.
Kind of going to say, it's a great group.
It is.
I know you're giving me a lot of the credit, but it's really the whole group.
Yep, but your enthusiasm really kind of was the initiative to really, really push it, so...
Thank you.
And Nancy, I have an affinity for your husband, who's taught three of my four children.
Yes.
And I'm sure he's going to get the fourth, too, so he does a great job in the history department at the high school.
Thanks.
And you guys are lucky, because she makes the most amazing chocolate chip cookies.
Excellent.
I'll second that.
You didn't bring samples.
Chris keeps talking about the regatta ones.
Yes.
I can vouch for the regatta.
So we're a little, we're a little tainted here, but seriously, you know, any, any recommendations you guys bring before the board, you're going to have, at least speaking for myself, you're going to have my full support.
Thanks so much. Thank you.
Make a motion for the appointment of the following individuals to the Foxborough Cultural Council for a three-year term to expire in 10/29/2022. Lydia Haig, Nancy Kazer, and Nicole Vashon Hanlon.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Outstanding. Great. Thank you for joining. This is outstanding. It is a great group of people.
Thank you so much.
Keep up the good work.
Thanks for coming by.
And the kids, and the kids were great.
Oh, thanks.
Kudos.
Really well behaved.
Olive Garden here, change of manager.
Hi. How you doing? So this isn't a public hearing, so it's just, tell us a little bit about yourself and about what's going on. Okay. I just got promoted a couple of weeks ago.
Congratulations.
I've been the assistant manager for 10 years at the Olive, at the Foxborough Olive Garden, and I've been with Olive Garden for 18 years, so we actually worked with Foxborough and the surrounding towns, so I know the community, I know the restaurant, and I'm comfortable running the restaurant as well, so...
Any questions from the board? No.
The, the bar manager's not changing, right?
No.
It's just a general manager change?
It's just a, yes, just the general manager change, correct.
Okay.
Motion to approve GMRI Inc. DBA, the Olive Garden Restaurant, number 1808, change of manager from Shalom Bennett to Richard H. Swanton Jr.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. We're way early. Is Prop Inc. here? Yeah, I knew you were going to come early. Good. Thanks.
Happens when I get up to play guitar, everybody leaves.
Everybody leaves.
My name is Joe Piaszeki. I actually live in Massachusetts as well. I live in Attleboro, but I work in the area as a location scout and location manager for all the movies and TV shows that come to the state. So this particular project here, we've been scouting for about the last six weeks. We have about 30 different locations, and four of the locations that were chosen by the director and designer happen to be in Foxborough, so I'd like to present those tonight. So this particular show, it's, it's actually a new TV series for a new streaming service scheduled to be launched next year called Quibi. Right now, it doesn't mean much, but soon it will be sort of like Netflix and Amazon and all of these other streaming services coming about, so the name of the show is Emma, and it's, and it's a sci-fi TV series. A few of the locations that we have, the first two are coming up kind of quick. We are, we'd like to film at 50 Central Street, right across the street, there is a scene that we needed to find a doctor's clinic, or something that could be a doctor's clinic, and there's an empty office building at 50 Central Street that we would like to use as a filming location. Basically, all of the filming is inside, and really what we're filming is a conversation that the woman has with a, with the person at the counter, and then she walks outside, walks around the corner, and, and that's pretty much the shot. It's, it's probably going to take about three and a half... Right across the street, there is a scene that we needed to find a doctor's clinic or something that could be a doctor's clinic. And there's an empty office building at 50 Central Street that we would like to use as a filming location. Basically, all of the filming is inside, and really what we're filming is a conversation that the woman has with a, with the person at the counter, and then she walks outside, walks around the corner, and that's pretty much the shot. It's probably going to take about three and a half hours to film. We're actually bouncing around that day. Right after we filmed that, we go right over to Foxborough Auto Gallery for a used car dealership scene. And that's actually what brought us to Foxborough, was the Foxborough Auto Gallery. The designer really liked that, and then we needed to find something that could be a doctor's clinic close by, which brought us to that empty space. So that's sort of, that's how that came about. And then the Foxborough Auto Gallery is scheduled to film for about two hours. So both of those scenes are relatively quick.
And that's on Route 1?
That's on Route 1. So everything will be contained. We're not doing anything on Route 1. In fact, we want to stay off Route 1. Everything will be inside the auto gallery parking lot, and we've made arrangements with the owner there to shoot that scene for the two hours. I will go back to 50 Central Street. I know that. I've actually had breakfast there a couple of times, right next door at the bagel shop. So I kind of wanted to get a feel for how the mornings are over there, which I do notice that they are busy, which, you know, we've actually made some changes from when we first presented this. We, I think we wanted to park some of our work trucks right there in front. I'm staying away from all the businesses to avoid that, so that people have a place to pull up, go, park, still get their morning bagel and coffee. We'll go around the corner on Wall Street and park our vehicles in those empty spaces, primarily right along the post office there. So I feel as though that's sort of a slower area. The post office isn't open yet, and when it does open, at least there is parking in the parking lot there. So, I mean, honestly, I think the extent of the filming over there at 50 Central Street would be the parking we would need for our trucks. We will, as far as the setup on that corner, I mean, we do have a pretty big crew right there on site. We probably will have about 30, 35 people there, so, I mean, it would be a pretty big crowd of people as far as us, the crew moving in and out and around the corner. I met with Chief Grace as well, and I will have police details, I've ordered two police details with cruisers as well, to be there with us just to help with the crew crossing the street and, you know, traffic and public safety. But we have no, no reason to stop traffic at that time, or, you know, there's no reason for the shot, at least. We may, you know, help crew cross the street or pedestrians that need to cross the street, but that's pretty much the extent of the scene over there. I've already done neighborhood outreach over there. I sent a letter out to all the businesses with my personal cell phone number and email. That way, if anyone has any questions, I had a couple of phone calls with questions, but no concerns by anyone. And in fact, I know that we'll probably go to the bagel shop and order bagels for the crew and coffee, and I'm sure all of our crew members will go in there themselves and order food, so I know that'll probably be beneficial to the area as well. So that's sort of the, one of the, that was the first location that's happening in a couple of days. The next two locations are sort of a little more involved, and those are sort of more or less full day or bigger, the more crew involved with this. So the third of all of these is a house we found at 30 Union Street. It's in the middle of a neighborhood, but we've been looking for, we needed a particular style house for this one character for a day and night scene. And after looking at over 20 different houses, the designer and director liked the way that the street looked, liked the way that the house looked inside and out, so we've made arrangements with that particular owner of that house to use the house for filming for one day, which is Thursday, November 7th. So we're a couple of weeks away. As far as that street goes, we will have probably four or five work trucks that we'll need to bring down that street as well. Typically, what I'll do for a neighborhood filming, I'll try to rent a church parking lot or a larger parking lot, sort of on the outskirts of the neighborhood where I would go and, you know, park all of our trailers and our big trucks, and then I would use smaller pickup trucks and box trucks to bring that equipment in that we would need, just to limit the amount of trucks on the street. I think the main concern with filming on that street is the fact that we do have a night scene in the backyard, which would mean we'd have to go, or we would like to go to about 10 o'clock at night to accomplish that. Filming on the street would be about 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Typical filming date for us in one location is about 12 hours. So that, I mean, that is why I'm saying it's pretty much one of our, this location, I think, is much bigger than the last two that are coming up. But I actually sent another notification out to all the neighbors. My goal really is to try to meet as many neighbors as possible, because not only do we need the house for filming, we usually like to work with neighbors to rent driveways and just for staging equipment. And so I really want to get the neighborhood involved. I had a neighborhood sidewalk meeting last night. We had about eight to 10 people show up, so out of the 100 flyers that went out, eight to 10 people. But, I mean, for the most part, everybody was excited, a lot of questions. People wanted to know about being, you know, an extra. You know, that's the typical question, but I, I mean, usually when we're in a neighborhood, people come out, they meet each other. Sometimes people meet each other, you know, they meet people they haven't met, they didn't know people were in the neighborhood. I mean, it's usually a fun time for everybody. I know it's going late, but typically, it's like a little block party for everyone, and everybody finds it pretty exciting. You know, they get to talk to the crew and ask questions, and, I mean, usually, it's a pretty good experience for the, for the neighborhood. So, I mean, I didn't know if anybody had any questions about that particular scene or what we're doing there, but again, I will make sure that everybody's happy in the neighborhood. And again, everybody has my cell phone number, so if there are any concerns, people know they can call me. So that's, that's that particular location. Next is sort of a different kind of scene. We have, on Friday, the 8th, we're sort of bouncing around again to a few different locations. We have a scene over at the Arbor Inn in Rentham between 5:00 and 6:00 o'clock, and then we go over to North Attleboro for some driving scenes there, and there's a gas station there we're filming. And then we have a scene that is a car pulling over. We needed to find a wooded street that, with a car that would basically be driving through the woods, and the actress driving the car pulls over to the side of the road, she starts to feel sick, so she needs to pull off, so she pulls over and she gets out to, onto the side of the road. After scouting a few different locations, we wanted to find something that was close to the area we'd be in. We found West Street, right at the corner of Weston Caton. There's actually, it has a great look, but it also has, there's a bus turnaround there, which gives us that space that we would need to actually pull off and do the scene on the side of the road. Usually, you know, on other streets similar to this, you just, you don't have that space to pull off. So this is, this is why we chose that space there for this particular scene. That would take place, so when we come back to Foxborough on that day, we'd start off between, at about 9:30 at night, it's all night scenes, night driving. We would have what we call free driving, where we would put a camera in the car with the actress and basically just drive with the flow of traffic, you know, back and forth on that street, and we would find a place to turn around, probably back at the Arbor Inn or a safe place down, down on the street somewhere, but we would have a deal with a safe place to turn around for that car. Again, we would have police details with us for that, but really, it would just be to be with us on the side of the road if we needed some assistance, but for the most part, the car would have the camera and would drive on its own. Where we would need most of our help with a police detail would be between 11:00 p.m. and 1:30 a.m. We have the actual scene where the car would pull off to the side of the road, and we would, we would like to do the scene right there on that bus stop, where we would have to do what we call intermittent traffic control, where we'd have a police detail down one end and another on the other side, and we would stay in contact with them and basically treat it as though it was a construction site on the side of the road. We would cone it off, and we would, you know, when we're filming, we would stop the traffic for three to five minutes, and then, once the camera cuts, everybody would push off to the side of the road, we'd let the traffic flow again, and then when we're ready to go again, we would, we would hold traffic again, and we would do that between, like I mentioned, 11:00 p.m. to 1:30 a.m. So I'm hoping at that time, the traffic is pretty minimal on that street. And again, when I mentioned this to the chief, we both thought it was far enough away from any of the houses that it really wouldn't have much of an impact. I will, there is one house there on that, on that corner that I will reach out to, just so they, I mean, they're going to obviously see that something's going on there. I want to make sure that that house is, is okay with everything that's going on. But, I mean, that's pretty much the extent of the filming we have in Foxborough. I'm sorry, I know it's a lot of information all at once. I apologize for that, but, I mean, were there any questions or anything that stood out? I definitely know that I would like to meet with the chief again. I think it's going to take a lot of ironing everything out with, with our details and sort of walking this through to make sure, you know, he's comfortable with everything. But again, I think that it's, you know, this is something that we were used to doing in several different locations every time we film, and, you know, as long as you're comfortable with everything and we have a plan with, with the details in place, I mean, I think it'll be a great scene to shoot.
Seems like you've done this once or twice before.
14 years.
Pretty thorough. Any questions from the board? No? 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 I mean, and this is not a voteable, we don't have to vote on it per se. It was just informational for the town, for us, and, yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot of information. I think for the most part, though, I mean, for me, half my job is logistics, and then really even more than half of it is just reaching out to the public and the outreach and the meetings on the, you know, on the, on the corner of the street to me, because really, again, and I'm local, like I said, I, I've been working in this business. I'm lucky enough to live in Massachusetts and work in the state I live. I don't have to go out to California or New York to film, I can live right here and do this. So what we want to do, and the other thing is, 95% of our crew is local. So the lighting guys, the costumers, the hair and makeup, they're all local. So a lot of people don't realize that we actually have thousands of people in Massachusetts that work in this industry. So we want to make sure that the towns and that the businesses and that the residents have a good experience, because the last thing we want to do is not be invited back to film another movie in the town. I mean, there's only so many cities and towns, and we want to make sure we can go back with other movies. This is, like I said, 14 years, and that's due to the tax incentive that we've had here in the state, which has been, you know, my full-time job since graduating Emerson in Boston. So I've, you know, I want to make sure everybody has a good experience with this. In fact, it's funny, the letters went out and my phone started ringing out off the hook because we actually have three other crew members that live in the neighborhood, we're filming. So they'll be right there too, so.
They'll be the biggest complainers.
That's true. Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure they'll give you a hard time, but, but yeah, that's kind of my spiel, and thank you very much for having us and allowing us to film. We definitely look forward to it. It's nice to be, finally, be south of Boston. All these movies want to be in Boston, and it's nice to sort of be in the surrounding towns, so.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck, Joe.
All right. Selectments update. Anybody have anything? Yeah, I have nothing today either. Help managers update.
All right. I was just going to say, during that presentation, that I've actually had some experience working with film crews in Dedham for the past 12 years when I was there, and actually, those experiences were actually pretty good. There were some small things, but it was nothing major that turned out to be a problem. And people actually found it to be quite enjoyable, and we saw, and we, in some of the films, there are actually pretty big stars that came into town to see, to have the films. I'm not sure who's going to be in this film, but it sounds like it's more of a, of a new, of a new, like an internet-type film situation, but.
Yeah, when Joe, when Joe met with us last week, he said there weren't any big-name stars that people would probably recognize. He, the, the name of his company, I don't know if he mentioned, is Quibi, the name of the series, and it stands for Quick Bites, and it's more of 15-minute movies to attract more of that millennial style of moving quick. But he said, not so much big stars, but they think they'll be, you know, big hits.
Right. Up and coming, so. All right, moving on to, so just to follow up on the meeting that we had in this room about a week and a half ago, where we talked about the financial summit. First of all, I want to thank the board for participating and, and to all the other boards and committees that participated as well, as well as the residents and different boards and committees and employees that participate in the process as well. As you can see, the goal of that meeting was to take a little different approach to just reporting information as opposed to getting people involved in a process. And the process, as we were trying to lay out, is to determine what's the best way to get feedback from the public as to how you want to shape the budget. Clearly, it's important for the boards to do this, but it's really important for the board to actually provide us some guidance and some, some priorities as to what you think should be funded throughout the year. But more importantly, I think that we've, this is something that I picked up on when I was away last week, was communication is a huge concern everywhere I go, and it's, and it was actually put on a national stage last week when I saw my colleagues from around the country talking about communication, how it's become such a huge concern. So in getting, in reaching the, the folks that don't particularly, don't always participate in local government, the phrase was coined at the meeting, STPs, the same 10 people that typically show up at meetings, are the ones that usually hear it the most, but there's a lot of people that watch on TV, but there's a lot of people that check, go through the internet, but not a lot of people participate in person. So it's really important to get that feedback, because as you can see from the conversation that we had the other night, there was a lot of good information that came out of that. And so I was able to summarize some of the thoughts, but some of the things that, some of the common themes were, were things such as, things such as, you know, what were the best practices that you've seen, if any, established in setting priorities and budgets? Identifying needs versus wants seemed to be identified as a common theme. Seeking input from residents and stakeholders early in the process was identified. Under budgeting, revenue was also highlighted as a good budgeting tool. Looking forward and looking back was important to determining how to best prepare a good spending plan. Two was, what, the second question, what do you recommend for a process for setting priorities? And surveying residents and having open forums for setting budget priorities was mentioned a few times as good process for establishing priorities. Better sharing of information was also highlighted as a good, good tool for establishing priorities, and to look at what has worked well over the years and areas that could be, that could use improvement. With respect to information that was received from the both the residents, employees, and other board members from other committees, some of the common themes of their responses were as follows. What process would you, would you, the residents, like to see enacted as to have the greatest amount of input to the budget process? One thought was improved communication between all levels of the budget process was identified. This was, this was important so that this could reduce the amount of questions asked at town meeting. So again, communication-based discussions throughout this entire process. Two, what was the, what best practices have you seen, if any, to prioritize budget items? And more and better engagement with the public was a common theme with both groups. This includes better education and orientation to members of the public so that they understand how decisions and recommendations are made. So one thing that I followed up with some of the, some of the folks that participated in this meeting, and one thing they suggested that came out of that was, you saw out in the front of the room this afternoon, in the hallway, the signs that talked about, you know, housing needs and the profile of the community for housing needs. If we did something like that with a budget, we could actually talk about revenues, we could talk about spending and what's happened over the past five years and see if we can show the trends of how we've done things. That's just one thought. Another way is to actually do a 15-minute segment of each selectments meeting to say, you know, let's talk about revenues, let's talk about, you know, you know, some of the capital spending that we've needed to do, and let's talk about some of the things that we still see on the horizon as things that still need to be done. So again, it's educating the public, educating the different boards and committees, and making sure they're fully aware of the kinds of things that we're contending with as staff members. Granted, it's the you as the board members that really give us the guidance of what we need in order to make the budget work, but it's up to us to make sure it all fits together. And so that's really what we're trying to seek out, is give us the guidance, because that's, you know... that's, you know, that's what helps us make this budget process work well, is getting those pieces to work, work, work in a tandem. So that was just, that's sort of like my summary of what happened at that meeting, and I think, I'm very grateful for the input, 'cause I thought it was really helpful in helping us to start that, start that dialogue. Following up on that, we do have a town meeting that's scheduled, a special town meeting scheduled for next, next Monday night, on November fourth. There are twelve articles on that agenda. The meeting's supposed to start at 7:30 at the high school. We certainly hope everybody will come and join and participate in that discussion. There's been really good discussion about this, about these articles at the AdCom level, at this board's level, at, at the various, I actually was on TV this afternoon talking with, with our, with our finance director, George Samir, and presenting that information, so that'll be televised this week as well. So we're trying to make sure we get everybody out there as fully informed. The advisory committee has recommended approval of all the articles. There was one, there was only one article where I think they had one dissenting vote, one tie vote, one non-participating vote, that was on the, on the budget amendment for this office, for the administration's office, a six-one to one vote. And that was for the $21,500 amount, which we support, by the way. Originally, there was a $26,500 request. That was reduced by $5,000, 'cause $5,000 was going to be, was earmarked for an interim which we won't hire in this fiscal year, will be next fiscal year if we do that. So that now was reduced to $21,500. So we wanna try to avoid any confusion that people might have at the meeting about that issue. But that was approved and, well, recommended for approval by the, by the advisory committee at that meeting, at their meeting. The second, the other item was that the last article was Article 12, there was just one dissenting vote, and that was on the last Article 12, in which there was some discussion about the, about the, about the appointment of the town manager to do the hearings, and the board of selectmen having that authority to do that. It went back and forth a few times, but in the end, the committee voted it seven to one, I believe, was the final vote, that, which ultimately came out of that discussion. So, so having said that, I think there was, there was good support, good discussion throughout the entire process, as I saw it. I tried to go as to, to every one of the meetings that I could attend, and will continue to do that as the process evolves into the budget process. So again, more discussion is better. I think whether we can have that ahead of time, as opposed to having a discussion at town meeting where people are surprised by some of the results that come out of that, I think is probably a better scenario.
Phil, can I just touch on educating the public? So we had a, we had a good discussion at the last AdCom meeting. Unfortunately, I think there were sixteen people in the room.
Right.
Right. Fourteen voters.
Right.
What, you and I?
Well, most of the stakeholders.
And ten on AdCom. Those meetings need to be televised. You know, I, I know they, they're gonna push back, but those meetings need to be televised. There's really good discussion and good information that comes out of those meetings, and not everybody can get to them. So I understand that they're, they're public meetings, not everybody can get to them, doesn't matter if there's a hundred people in the room or a hundred people watching on TV. You wanna solve some of the issues at town meeting, that's how you do it. But, you know, AdCom has to, has to buy into that. So, you know, I'm fully supportive of it, but ultimately, they have to buy in, and that's, that's the best way to educate the public.
Yeah, ultimately, the committee itself will have to decide if that's something they wanna do. And I think we talked about that, that night, it was discussed as an open point. As far as the rotary traffic, the rotary traffic that was enacted by the board at the last meeting, in terms of creating the new lanes, it seems to be working really well, actually. And so, okay.
It's working great. I mean, I see it every day, and I have not yet seen a backup beyond my house since it started.
So unintended consequences?
It's gonna be.
Main Street has, has improved getting big backups on South Street.
Okay.
So we just, we just moved the problem further on. And this is, this was destined to happen, and this is part of the process. So for the, for the, for the people that are a little frustrated, this is the information and this is part of the testing and everything that needs to go on. So just hang in there, hopefully get resolved, and we'll give the, the traffic engineers some good real-time data.
Right.
To make adjustments on the.
Well, that's, this is what this is, is a testing process, to determine where the pinch points are, and so, and if they need to be adjusted, we can, we can do that.
One thing I've noticed, just during the short time this, this test has been going on, is we're starting to get traffic in both lanes, which we haven't had for years, really, since the state came and redid 130 with the signs. We've had a one-lane rotary, and it wasn't designed to be a one-lane rotary. And at least, you know, there's gonna need to be adjustments, more testing, et cetera, but at least we're starting to see traffic in both lanes, and that's the way it was intended to be used.
The other new thing is, is the train service began last Monday, and I know it's, it started out pretty much as a slow start, and I think in overtime, it's starting to pick up, and I think more and more people are gonna start utilizing the service. So, but again, I think everybody's pretty pleased with the way it's starting to roll out, and I'm not surprised to see that it started out slow and it'll pick up over time. At this, that what you have there is an issue of, the more success stories that come out, the more people will actually utilize the service. So I think that will be important. And then I talked about the town meeting and the, and the show that we did this afternoon. Also, tomorrow, we're meeting with the seniors, with my monthly meeting with the seniors to go over their articles and to also go over the warrant with them, so they're fully advised of the articles for town meeting as well. So that's the summary. I did, as I said, I returned from, from the national conference on, actually, the conference was through Wednesday and finished on Wednesday, and then I took a couple days vacation while I was in Nashville, Tennessee, and it's a great city, if anybody has a chance to go there, I certainly, I certainly recommend highly. A great place to go, a lot of fun, and really, an up-and-coming city. I'm just amazed by how much new growth, and you wanna see a place under construction. That's the place to go. I don't think I've ever seen so many sky cranes in my entire life in the one city, so it's a place on the move.
Thank you.
So just a couple of quick updates. We have three positions that we're working to fill. One is posted now, and that's the DPW director position. We're looking to have our new director in place at the first of the year, as Roger Hill gets ready to retire a couple of days into the new year. And we also have our community information specialist, that, that's one we're working on, that's no longer advertised, but we're, you know, working on that process, and also a DPW coordinator position, you know, due to a retirement, so.
I think, I think it's important to point that we're, we're close to making an offer to a candidate for the, for the community information specialist, but we're reluctant to make an offer until after town meeting on the fourth. So if everything goes as we hope it will, we will make an offer the next day, and so it just, it sort of further emphasizes the importance of having that position. I've actually heard from one or two people that they said, well, you've gone without the position for a few, for, actually, it's been only three weeks that we've been without the position. If we can get somebody to fill the position, we'll be probably one of the fastest times we've been able to fill a position. So it's not by design, we're keeping that vacant, we actually need the position badly, especially in this day and age where this is, getting information out is really a critical piece of what we're trying to do, what we're trying to accomplish.
We've worked hard, along with our unions, to, to have, to have opportunities to get employees back to work after, after injuries. So light duty, modified duty, those sort of things, and does benefit to, to the town, to the, to the services here and to the employees themselves. And one of the, one of the things that's really important is when, when somebody's injured at home, they're disconnected from their workforce, they're missing the social connection, especially if they're home alone. So there's a benefit to the employee, and obviously, there's a benefit to the town, both financially and from a services perspective. So in that vein, we've been selected as a pilot community to, to model a return-to-work program through our insurance provider, Maya. So we're gonna be working with them over the next three to six months in, in seeing how a total return-to-work program works to get people back into the workforce quicker, and, you know, mutually beneficial program. So we're happy to be selected for that program. Couple of quick updates on wellness. We have four wellness programs going on right now with our employees. We've just wrapped up our steps challenge and our water challenge. We've had a, you know, drinking, water drinking challenge, where folks have entered, you know, with the chance to win a prize, but I think more so to improve their health and wellness. The other two that we're in the middle of, you know, providing our yoga program and total body workout program. Great response from our employees, who seem to be really interested in improving their health and wellness. So that's it for my update.
Great, thank you. Action items?
If I could just do one while I was thinking of it. Any feedback concerning the removal of all the no parking signs? From people?
I haven't heard anything.
I haven't heard anything from anyone.
Okay. I had a small business operator bring it up, that without the signs, there were a couple cars parked in front of her business for the entire day that limited some of her customers from getting in and out, and they felt that they hadn't gotten any information at all about what was gonna be happening with the signs, because this individual said, I would have said something to someone. And I think, Doc, that person probably talked to you.
She did.
That was mentioned, so. And I don't know whether at some point we might have to rethink, you know, getting rid of all the signs, if there are some areas where some of the smaller businesses are gonna need some relief, much like we left the sign in front of Primos. You know, to encourage people not to disappear someplace for an entire day.
I think, thanks for bringing it up, Ed. I did forget that, and I did have a conversation with her also, and we might have to rethink just a few of the signs along that part of, of town, even if it's just like, you know, eight to five. So that that run-in, run-out business doesn't get blocked up, especially like on a Saturday where cop ox there all day, 'cause something's going on in the.
Coming right on the.
It's the South Street and commercial.
And commercial, okay.
Just as feedback back to Paige.
That is a challenge.
Even not on the inside, I don't think on the inside of the rotary is much of an issue as the ones right in front of their businesses.
It's unfortunate that people are that discourteous to people to park in front of a business all day like that, because it's, strangely enough, you might be surprised to hear, but I found this to be the case in my previous community, where some of the business owners would park in front of their own, those businesses all day and actually take away their own parking space, or some of their own people. That, I don't think that's the case in this case at all, so I'm a little bit cool about that, and I.
I think what took her off was that there was a craft fair on the.
I see.
And obviously, if that car was there all day, it was one of the craft fair vendors.
Right.
That was just sitting there, and supposedly, at least I know, on some of the fairs, you know, they're supposed to park here, and let them, you know, so people can come and go.
Right, exactly. But to finish my thought, just on that, that, you know, that there are different situations that occur when you don't have, you know, limiting signs for certain parking areas, where I think while the signs are there, people sort of take for granted that people just don't park there. But if you, and that's the reason why the sign is there, is to keep people from not parking there all day long. But if they, if the sign isn't there, then there is nothing to use, that we can use to enforce that situation. So that's, that's the other side of that coin. So I, but I think that we need a little bit more time to work through it a little bit, to see if in fact it continues to be a problem, and help define the areas that, that really could use the signs and be maintained.
And at the same time, I also told her to, you know, go to the Downtown Business Association meeting.
That's a very good forum for that.
Yeah, and I said that, I said, there's a good forum for that, 'cause there's other people in your same shoes, but also Paige goes to a lot of those.
She does.
And she needs, it would be good feedback for her.
It would be, yeah.
And if it's a matter of these, you know, these one-day, like a Saturday event, you know, those, those applications come through, through our office, and that could be something where.
No parking in front of, in front of small businesses.
Yeah, we can make that part of the process.
Sure, great idea. All right, thanks, thanks again, Ed, for bringing that up.
Okay, no problem. Action items, Mr. Chairman? Motion to accept a gift donation of $100 to the Veteran Services Department from American Legion Post 93 in memory of Don Rodman.
Second.
All those in favor?
Motion to accept a gift donation of $20,000 to the Recreation Department from the fans of Foxborough Recreation, Inc., to be used for the Booth Playground.
Second.
All those in favor?
Motion to accept a gift donation of $250 to the Veteran Services Department from Foxborough Never Forgets, Inc., to be used for the Purple Heart signs.
Second.
All those in favor?
Motion to accept a gift donation of $100 to the Foxborough Historical Commission from an anonymous, from anonymous, from Book Sales.
Second.
All those in favor?
Motion to accept a gift donation of $25 to the Foxborough Historical Commission from Paul F. and Carolyn M. Godin from Book Sales.
Second.
All those in favor?
Motion to accept a gift donation of $75 to the Foxborough Historical Commission from Mark and Beth Ferencik from Book Sales.
Second.
All those in favor?
Motion to adjourn, selectmen's meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.